Welcome everybody to the December 16th Town Council Meeting, the annual Christmas meeting, as I like to call it. Let the record read that the entire council minus Charlie Finch is present at this time. We'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Okay, um, at this time, I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence. Couple things here. Most of y'all probably heard about the fatal car accident in St. Leonard on Monday. Sixteen year old, you know, was the fatal victim. That young man, Cody Blackwell, lived right here in Chesapeake Beach. In fact, for those of us who know the town, he was right here at, I'm gonna point 14th and C. If you know that, that corner, right next to Terry Kleiser. Just, just very, very sad to lose a sixteen year old like this. And in addition to a moment of silence for, for Cody, I want to include also that we, we also take a moment of silence for all the young people who have perished from opioid abuse this past year. It's been a very, it's, it's, it's been a rough year. So if you will, at this time. Thank you, counsel. Give me one second here. Okay, um. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it, thank you. At this time, we ask, is there any public comment on anything that's on the agenda? Hearing none, approval of the minutes of the November 18th Town Council Meeting, Town Council Work Session, I'm sorry.
If you approve.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it, and approval of the minutes of the November 18th Town Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And so right now, next we're, we're gonna go to the, the, the Light Up the Town presentation, is that right, Holly?
Yes.
Okay, it's all yours. Very good. Very good, thank you, Holly. And I, I look forward to, you know, driving around and, and seeing all these houses, and I encourage everyone else to do likewise. Thank you. Next, I'm gonna do a sort of a meet, Richard Birch. We, uh, we all met him a couple of weeks ago, but I, I thought I'd ask him to, you know, call in and just see, have, as we traditionally do with new appointees, just see if to, you know, have a sort of a meet the Town Council kind of a thing. So, um, I'll start with, with Peggy, work my way around the horn. Richard, welcome. And, and, and thank you for stepping up to, to volunteer. And, you know, we all, you know, kinda know you, but I'll, I'll, I'll just see if the council has any, any questions or comments or whatever for you. And I'll begin with Peggy, who's sitting in, you know, forever now in, you know, Durrick's old seat, which was my old seat, all the way left. So Peggy, anything for Richard?
All right, thanks. No, actually, of course, I had time to talk to Richard a cup, about a month ago. And I have to say, it's a very impressive resume. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Keith?
Hi, Richard. I appreciate you volunteering to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Really appreciate it, because of volunteers like you that the town keeps running. So really appreciate it. As was already mentioned, we had a chance to chat with you quite a bit about a month ago. So I don't really have any questions. Welcome.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
And Greg?
Oh yeah, Richard, good to see you throwing your hat in the ring here on that, that committee. Thank you for lending your, your time and your experience to the town.
Thank you, Greg. And, and Larry?
Welcome, Richard. Very impressive resume. I particularly noted the member, past EMS chief board member, Hughesville Volunteer Fire Department, is a member of North Beach. I welcome you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And lastly, Valerie?
Yes, Richard, I just wanted to say thank you for volunteering. Really wonderful, we have such good qualified candidates willing to step up. So we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Richard, thank you for, for calling in. Since you're on, on the road, you, you may as well just drop off, it'll probably be safer. And thank you, Richard, and, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next, Town Administrators' Report, we've read Holly's report. Is there anything or two that you wanna highlight, Holly, for the, the council in town?
Yes, Mayor. We have two retirements that we wanted to acknowledge this evening. We have Marilyn Van Wagner, who is retiring from the water park. Marilyn has served the town for 12 seasons, and I, I know Marilyn, you're on the call. So thank you for joining. We had the opportunity to receive a few quotes about Marilyn from those that have worked under her at the water park, and we'll be posting these as well. So it just speaks to the connection Marilyn has had with her staff. So thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Yes, indeed. You'll have a chance to, to, the council will have a chance to comment soon.
Yes. Yes, and we have one other additional retirement, Jimmy Dickerson, from the Water Reclamation Treatment Plan. He's been with the town for eight and a half years, serving as operator, trainee, and maintenance technician at the treatment plant. So we also wanna thank Jimmy for his service to the town.
Thank you. Okay, I'm very good. Be, before I ask the council to have any questions on the, of report, I wanna just give Marilyn a, a special thanks as well. I've known you a long time, you've served the town a long time, and you know, the water parks come a long way. So thank you for your service, Marilyn. And I'll, I'll begin with, well, I'll begin with Valerie. We have any comments for Holly or Marilyn or whatever?
Well, first, I'll start with Marilyn. Marilyn has been an absolute blessing to work with you. We've watched the water park grow and thrive under your leadership. And from the time I started on council, to where it is now, the change in the water park is just remarkable, and you're the reason why. And so thank you very much. I'm gonna miss working with you, but I know I will see you around, and it's been my pleasure. Do you want us to come in then?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. I did have one question, I had a few questions, ones on the federal dredge. I just wanna make sure, I think at one time, there were possibly ATVs going around the dredge oil site, and as we redo the rehabilitation of the dredge oil site, that has stopped, is that correct? And there's no more ATVs back there?
That's correct.
Awesome. Also, if you go to the next page, and under item number four, Highlands Special Tax District, I was unable to make the December 14th Tuesday meeting. So I was wondering if you could summarize the number of people that were there, and the summation of the comments that were received regarding the Highlands Public Sewer Connectivity hearing?
Yes, so this meeting was held by Calvert County Government at the Northeast Community Center. There were some technical difficulties with the recording, so I am working on getting an update from the county, and I will definitely get that over to Town Council.
Do you know how many people attended?
I do not.
And we don't have any idea what their comments were, what the flavor of the community was regarding this special task district, special tax district, right?
Unfortunately, a lot of the comments could not be heard very clearly, so I will have to provide a recap to Town Council at a later date.
Okay. When the come, when you said that the comments could not be heard, that might be just on the tape, but the public themselves did not have a problem communicating, did they? I mean, they were able to have their... My question that I'm asking is, the technical difficulties did not affect the citizens' ability to communicate with them, is that correct?
That's correct, the public hearing was held.
Okay. All right, and so we'll be getting some sort of update in the next time period?
Yes.
My, my big thing here, Holly, is I just wanna know that, I want a flavor of the nature of, the feeling of that community, and the nature of the, the questions that were asked, so that I can be fully informed regarding this. Because it's such an expense for these residents, and I wanna make sure that they were heard. Other than that, those were all the questions that I had, thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
General thanks, one, congratulations, Marilyn, enjoy retirement. I hope you do a better job at retirement than I've been doing. Second, I know Jimmy's not on, but I just wanted to congratulate Jimmy Dickerson. I know Jimmy, he's also been very active at the fire department, so good luck to him. As Councilmember Bodine mentioned, I had the same questions on the Highlands Public Sewer Hearing. I'll look forward to seeing the additional information. And then the last thing I had was under item six on grants. Holly, could you remind me of what we plan to do with the $150,000 of grants from Calvert County?
Right, so this is funding actually through program Open Space through the state. So we required Calvert County's agreement with the projects that we had brought forward. So they have approved those projects, and it has been forwarded off to the state. I did speak with our contact there, and hopefully we'll hear something in the coming weeks on final approval. But this, these projects include walkable community committee projects, one of which is the open access to the northern point of Callum's, the Callum's complex. An, an additional one is two pocket parks, one near the, the waterfront behind Baycrest, and the other is along B Street on the parcel that the town had purchased recently.
Got it, thank you. And last thing, Holly, just congratulations again on Light Up the Town and the Christmas Market, that was an excellent opportunity to interact with a lot of people. Thank you for staging that.
Thank, thank you, Larry. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I know Jimmy's not on the call, I'd like to wish him well. I didn't, didn't know him. Certainly wish Jimmy Dickerson the best of life post Chesapeake Beach. Marilyn, there's not enough time here to say how much I feel about missing you. I'll just put it in Louie Goldstein's way, we'll miss you really good. I did attend the Highland Special Tax District, the public hearing, and they did have some technical difficulties there, but, um, it, I've gained quite a bit more perspective from the residents that are there. I know that, that probe, that, that, the tax district, the advancement of the tax, tax district is in a holding pattern right now. I know the county's waiting for the HOA and its members to coagulate on its consensus that it's gonna allow the county to move forward. I thought it was a good meeting, and the county did a good job there. And I don't have any questions for Ms. Wall, thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank Marilyn and Jimmy for their service to the town, and congratulate them on their retirement, and wish them the best on this new phase in their life. And I have no additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy?
Hi, yeah, like Keith, congratulations to Marilyn and Jimmy, and retirement's great, hope you enjoy as much as I do. No questions on the report that haven't been already asked.
There you go. Thank you, Peggy. Public Works, a report, we've read Jay's report. If, if we have any questions, I'll begin with Peggy. Any questions? Okay, Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Greg?
The question's for me, sir, thank you.
And Larry?
Just knocking on wood, as you are on the water leaks, no water main break since last council meeting, hope we keep that up with the weather getting colder. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. And, and Valerie?
No questions for Jay, he's getting off easy tonight.
Thank you.
Very good. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. We've read John's report, Valerie, I'll begin with you, any questions for, for John?
Uh, no questions, I always rely on Larry, just kidding.
Thank you. Larry?
Just a comment that we have discussed before, on the bypass to the denitrification filters, as we discussed, the word bypass has a very negative connotation to a lot of people, including MDE. And we discussed in the past, John, I know that maybe a a better word to use would be a diversion or something there, because bypass makes people think that we are discharging untreated wastewater into the bay, and that is not the case in this instance, as you point out in your report. So thank you very much for that, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
No questions from me, John, thank you, you have a Happy New Year.
Thank, thank you, Greg. Keith?
Yeah, just, just one question, I note that you state there was gonna be an inspection, electrical inspection on December 8th, and I was just curious how that went on the bus bars and MCC3, I guess, yeah.
Is that a question for John?
That is a question for John.
And John, did, did you hear the question, or are you on mute? I'm gonna guess the latter.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You can? No, we had the inspection on the 8th, and we had the thermagraffiti, or graphed it, done also, which is the thermo inspection on all the heat that the electric put through the bus bars and all. Also, we had the third party also inspect the torques on the, on the bolts and everything, and everything checked out. So we put the blowers back online, and we're finally getting some progress on those variable drive blowers. So we're getting the, the process control back in order.
Great to hear, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and Peggy?
I have a question on the, the five alarm calls. The loss of prime due to the clogging of the pumps, is that unusual, or is that something that happens regularly?
Well, this is the time of year of leaves, and right now, we're working on RFP to get a lot of these tanks covered. Once we get these tanks covered, we should see these, these alarms going, going away, hopefully. But it's, it's a seasonal thing.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Code Enforcement Report, we've read Connie's report, if we have any questions, I'll begin with Peggy.
I have no questions.
Okay. Keith?
No questions, thank you.
And Greg?
None from me, thank you, sir.
And Larry?
Just a comment, congratulations, Connie, on, under the closed accounts, one of our longstanding issues, CE 19-67, congratulations on getting that closed out. And keep up the effort on the open ones, on the ones that have been open since 18 and 19. So good luck with that, and if there's anything we can do to help, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And, and Valerie?
Yeah, actually, do you have a question? I'm, I'm looking at the report, Connie, and it's page one, two, and I'll give you a case number example, CE 21-84, 83, 82, 53, 52, and 13. These are all, um, like zoning permits. And zoning permit required, and I guess my question, Connie, is, is there something better to communicate with residents when they are required to have a zoning permit? Because that just seems kinda like quite a few. And I know you're following up on them, but these aren't really old cases, at least the 84, 83, and 82 are from December. And so I just find it odd that, like, maybe we're not getting out the word well enough on what is needed for a zoning permit. So do you have any comments?
Well, the one comment I have, first of all, thank you for, for recognizing those, because it gives me the opportunity to say to the public who are, are on tonight and may listen in the future, if you have a question about whether something should be permitted, call and ask the question before you go ahead and make the decision to do something. It's just pretty much that simple. I think Jay and I've had this conversation, it seems like in the last several months, people have had, I think, a lot more time on their hands than they've normally had, and have possibly just taken upon themselves to maybe do some things around the house and make some improvements that they don't think they need to have a permit for, and actually, they do. So I think that's part of it. Maybe we could figure out a different way to highlight things on the website, and that's something that maybe Chris and I and Fran could work on together. Although I think sometimes the folks that end up with these problems are not the ones that are gonna look on the internet for the answer anyway. It's, it's a hard thing, you know, I just don't think some people really think about having to get a permit, or some people actually think that they can do things and they won't get caught. So, you know, you have both sides.
Yeah, like doing something in the towns right away. I just, I also wanna, like, look at this on another side of the coin, and that is, thank you, Connie, through your efforts, we are finding out where zoning infractions are occurring, we're keeping up with them, and that is wonderful. I mean, the job you're doing to keep on top of this is recognized and thoroughly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for that.
Thank you. Next, There Is No Town Treasurers Report, Dale is off on Christmas vacation. Town Engineers Report, I don't know if Wayne's on the call. We
Yes.
We've read Wayne's, uh, report, if we have any questions, I'll begin with Valerie.
Uh, no, I have no questions for Wayne.
Okay. Larry?
I've asked this question before, but just under Richfield Station, the completion of the plats on July 27th, waiting for start of construction, any updates, Wayne, on when that might happen?
Actually, I saw an email today, Larry, where the owner is starting to move forward with some processing. So it's been quiet since July, but I saw some movement today.
Thank you for the update. Sure.
Greg?
Yeah, Wayne, I'm sorry if I've forgotten what the acronym, acronym stands for, but NEPA, we had a kickoff meeting, can you explain what that, what that was, and what it is, and what we're doing with that?
Sure. NEPA stands for the National Environmental Protection Act. In essence, it's a environmental review, and on the 261 sidewalk project, because we're starting to do our 100% CD work on that, we have to do a NEPA study. And in fact, in this case, since it's a state-funded project, the state actually does the majority of the workforce, and they have kicked that project off to review historic structures and other obvious environmental impacts within the ground. That's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if anybody can hear in the background, we have a lot of kids that are joyously, I think they're waiting for Santa to drive through, so, thank you. Thanks, Wayne.
That's, that's pretty cool. Keith?
Yeah, no additional questions, thank you.
Done. And Peggy?
No additional questions, thank you.
Thank you. We, next, we've read the deputies' report. If, is somebody on the call, Connie?
Yep. Lieutenant.
Yes.
Okay, if we have any good evening, sir. If we have any questions on your, your report, I'll begin with Peggy.
I have no questions.
Okay. And Keith?
No questions, thanks.
And Greg?
No questions, thank you.
And, and Larry?
No questions, but Lieutenant Hollinger, happy holidays to you, and give our best to Sergeant Schroder, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, you too, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everyone.
Indeed, and Valerie?
And Merry Christmas, no questions, thank you for all that you do.
Yes, and thank you, Joe, and Merry Christmas to you and your family and your, and your staff.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next, we, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, if we have any questions of that report, please, you know, funnel them over to Larry, and he'll
Eric, can I just offer a couple of comments?
Please do, sir.
Be real quick, as was mentioned, our taking Santa around town is progressing tonight, we're underway from, started at six, well, actually, a little bit later, because we had a fire call, but it's supposed to go till nine, and the areas covered tonight will be Woodland Way, Richfield Station, Heritage Woods, and Bayview Hills. So I hope you have a chance to get out and see Santa as he moves around town. We still have some Christmas trees left at the firehouse, but hurry up, we're running out of them, and the department is underway on having a new Engine 12 constructed. If you have any interest in seeing that, you can get onto the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department website and see some pictures of the ongoing construction of a new Engine 12. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Next, the mayor's report, just, I had, had a really good day today, possibly the best day I had as mayor this year. I had the honor to go to Beach Elementary School and judge their first annual Christmas door decorating contest. The, the theme was kindness, and as you see in front of you, that's just an example of, of one of the 20 or 30 doors that I, I judged. The, and, and we will have a, Holly has prepared a, a video for the town and the council, and you'll see that sometime next week. It's really amazing what these amazing what these children did to the, you know, twenty or thirty doors in the school with the theme being kindness. I mean, where do you see it? These kids are really something out. They are really, really special, and it was just an honor to represent, you know, all of you, you know, and be a judge in this. And you know, kindness is a it's something we should do all year round, but certainly the Christmas season is a good time to, you know, think about that. And like I said, I was really touched today. But I encourage all of us to embrace the theme of kindness, you know, during the Christmas season. Be kind to others and yourself. Shop local, those business owners are our neighbors, we're being kind to them. Appreciate what we have in this wonderful country of ours, and and lastly, but certainly not least, enjoy your precious family. You, you know, it goes too quickly and you just don't know. So on a passing note, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. And that's my mayor's report, thank you. May all my days be as fun as the one I had today. Okay, next, reports of officers, et cetera. We've read Larry Brown's report, I don't know if Larry's on the call or not, if we have any questions. Okay, thank you Larry, Merry Christmas, and beginning with Valerie, I'll see if the council has any any comments for you.
Hi Larry, Merry Christmas. Once again, thank you for all the work that you and the commission is doing. And just as a note, I'd like to point out in your report, I am rather heartened to see the number of comments from the green team members that were discussed and adjudicated favorably. It's wonderful to see. And I think they were some really solid comments. Other than that, my only question would be, to the best of your feeling, how many more meetings do you think we'll take to adjudicate the remainder of the comments? Or in other words, when do you think the committee might be voting on the comprehensive plan so that it comes forth to town council?
Um, it's, it's a, it's a difficult question because I'm not sure what the other commissioners are going to bring up. I know Chris is going through the comments from the state and the county, and he's going to have a summary of those for us at the next meeting to review. We still have a number of the comments that were live at our hearing to look at, and a few left from the written comments that were submitted, so. I hate to hazard a guess on how long it'll take.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
No specific comments, but keep up the good work. Look forward to discussing this at the council level on the updated comprehensive plan. It's been an incredible effort, and I congratulate you, and thank you deeply. Thank you.
Thank you Larry, and Greg?
Yeah Larry, thanks for being on the call this evening. My comments are in no way critical of the commission. You know that I've been in attendance at several of those meetings, I know you guys, everybody involved there has been working really hard. We've moved through this process. Can you remind this body when the moratorium expires?
As I understand or recall, the language in the moratorium, it was I think it said nine months, but it also said when the council decides to lift it, so I think it's open ended in the language on it, but I don't have it in front of me.
I think council passed something that extended that nine months. I thought we went three months, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. That moratorium expires at the end of this year. Does that, does anybody know?
Mayor, do you want me to answer that, or?
Yeah, go ahead Holly.
Right, so it did expire at the end of the year, but it was extended another three months.
Okay, so it was set to expire at the end of this year, so in with the council action extension officially, it's, it's you know, and I'm not, I'm not inclined to vote to extend it again, as my previous comments, but so that ends, it expires at the end of this March then, right?
Yes.
Yes, well, that's certainly good to know. You know, I see where the planning commission has deferred their December meeting, so you know, they didn't meet in December at all. You know, and again, I'm not being critical, I just, I kind of, I feel like several of us probably should be feeling, we're under the gun with this thing. And we should be talking about things and efforts so that we don't end up in a crisis mode, but we do have us, we have the three months at the beginning of this year. And that'll certainly help, so Larry, I wish you would just extend my best wishes for any year to your colleagues, and I appreciate the hard work that y'all have been putting in on this thing. You know, what the commission members feel is of the utmost importance to me. Chris Kubik works for the town, doesn't live here in town. I think that what the people that live in the town that have to vote on this, they matter the most. So looking forward to getting this thing wrapped up early next year, because the budgets are becoming right down the pipeline. I just don't want to end up in a crisis mode situation. I know that several of my colleagues take sharp criticism to some of those important details in that plan, and if there's some discussion that we're going to need to have to kind of work through some of that stuff. You know, it's important that we kind of set some of that groundwork, but thank you for attending tonight, and you have a happy new year. Thanks Larry.
Thank you. I would point out that we canceled next week's meeting because of the holidays and people being away. But we are, we did schedule two meetings in January, so we're making up for it.
Very good. Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you mayor. I just wanted to thank Larry and the commissioners for the thoroughness which they're addressing all the comments. I did get a chance to listen into the tape of the last meeting. And, and it was impressive how they were working through all that, and I was able to connect with Chris Kubik on some of the questions and appreciate Commissioner Greengold's explanation on one of my questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you Keith. Peggy?
I have no further questions. Craig asked mine.
Very good. No Board of Appeals meeting, is John Bacon on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey Merry Christmas John, anything you want to tell us?
Oh, all I want to really say is that read the oyster Christmas story. It's a lot of fun. And we're back next year with a whole lot more oysters.
Well. You know, thank you John, I really appreciate what you and your group do, and you have a couple really fine people on there that I know well, and Merry Christmas to you and all, so thank you John. Next, climate change advisory group, Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted in the town engineer's report by Mr. Newton, work is proceeding on the town's flooding and sea level rise study. This effort is being funded by a grant of seventy five thousand dollars from Maryland DNR. Many residents may have noticed bright paint on pavement sidewalks around town. This is part of the mapping effort that is also mentioned in Mr. Newton's report. This is to get a better handle on elevations and flooding across town. Our efforts are being coordinated with a similar effort underway by the town of North Beach. The twin beaches must work together to address these issues since Mother Nature does not recognize any boundaries between our towns. We are also working on a way to share mapping and flooding information with town residents and local businesses, and we'll be providing updates. This is effort that's underway by a group that we've established called the Flooding and Sea Level Rise Study Group. And we are working as part of that group on establishing a steering committee to guide these efforts. We've already reached out to several residents and town businesses community to seek members. If interested, please contact me. Co-chair Keith Partick or Town Administrator Holly Wall. I also participated in the first ever Climate Change Professional Summit on December eighth and ninth. Since I'm a certified climate change professional, I got to participate in it in multiple sessions that included climate change professionals from across the country and several foreign countries, in which we discuss ways to advance climate change issues and integrate these issues into our daily lives. We need to make consideration of the impacts of climate change now and in the future part of our everyday businesses and governments. So this group is working to advance that. That's all I have. Co-chair Keith, any comments?
Thank you Larry, excellent report, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Don't go anywhere Larry, EDC?
EDC, Continue to Service Chair of the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission. We had a recent meeting on December eighth. And we discussed future economic development initiatives across the country. We currently have three vacancies on the County Economic Development Advisory Commission. If anyone who's listening or views this later is interested in serving on EDAC, please contact Anita Bontiarsi, who is the Acting Director of County Economic Development, or you can always reach out to me. On behalf of economic development, we want to welcome Bya Coastal Italian Kitchen and Wine Bar. That's going to be located here in town at the former Mama Lucia site. They are scheduled for opening in spring of twenty twenty two, and we look forward to having them in our town. Continue to coordinate with the town planning zoning commission to make sure appropriate issues are addressed in the draft updated comprehensive plan. And I plan to attend the Maryland Economic Development Association meeting on January thirteenth, and the Maryland Chamber of Commerce meeting on January nineteenth. As always, if you have any questions or comments on economic development in our town, please contact me or co-chair Greg Morris. And I will defer to co-chair Mr. Morris for any additional comments. Greg?
There comes a fire truck. Yeah, nothing for me to add. Larry, I know it's been a quiet year and a half, couple of years here. Always look forward to meeting with you, my friend.
Yep, you bet.
So, thank you, you're doing a great job. No, no.
Just hope that fire truck goes past your house.
Well, the kids are out there, it's just that time of year to hear that join the kids' voice is just incredible to me, it's so uplifting.
Thank you. Thank you Larry. Green Team, Valerie?
Hi, yes, the Green Team will be meeting on December ninth. And at that meeting, really, we did a few things. One is the members talked about ideas with comprehensive plan, and you'll see those in the Planning and Zoning Administrator Report that we just discussed with Larry. So I really want to thank the Green Team members for taking the time to voice their opinions through the comments for the comprehensive plan. I think it'll make the comprehensive plan stronger than what it currently is, so. They were good suggestions that were provided. The other thing that we did is we went through a spreadsheet of ideas that had been kicking around for the past few years. Decided which of those ideas, if they're on a spreadsheet that we wish to continue pursuing, and those that we feel are accomplished. And then add some new ones. I'd also like to mention two things that will be occurring this spring. One, and I'll keep mentioning it each, each town council meeting, is the Sam Greggy Native Bee and Pollinator Chat Discussion at the Northeast Community Center, and that will be on Saturday, March fifth. And the other with a date yet to be determined is the dedication of the Garden by the Bridge railing and town hall property to Nancy Furley, and that's moving along quite well. Our next meeting is January twenty seventh at six thirty, and that meeting will also be in town halls. We just need to follow all appropriate COVID requirements, mask and separating. So that once again, our next meeting is January twenty seventh at six thirty, and we'd love to have you. That's all I have.
Thank you. KRC, Mr. Morris?
I really don't have an update from the committee. I'm looking forward to seeing what the town's been working on. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Twin Beach opioid abuse, Keith?
Thank you mayor. So we had a meeting of our committee on December seventh. I had good attendance from the members. And we basically discussed two, two main events that we're trying to coordinate for twenty twenty two. One is the Health Fair, shooting for a time in spring. We're trying to figure out the best date right now, working it around other events that are happening in town and the county. And so right now, we're looking late May, or I'm sorry, late April, maybe May. To have that, we've reached out to the town, we're coordinating with, as you may have seen in the, in Holly's report. And we have also reached out to the county, and they're having a five K, we're planning a five K in the spring, and we're, we're hoping we can coordinate with them, and they're, they are definitely interested. This is going to be a matter of getting the dates finalized, that works for everybody, of using that as kind of the anchor event for the Health Fair, but we're definitely interested in ideas if folks have them on what they would like to see at the Health Fair, but you know, we were thinking it should be something where you're actually getting something from it, not just picking up pamphlets, but there were things to do, and maybe health services to some extent. Whether that's getting your BMI checked, or whether that's getting a COVID shot, or perhaps even getting rabies vaccination for your pet a free clinic or something to that effect at that. It's kind of some of the ideas that have come forth so far. Or have the mobile health clinic from the Calvert Health come. Just a lot still to be planned and executed. The other is, of course, more planning for the International Overdose Awareness Day vigil, similar to what we had this past year. Hoping to expand maybe into the county, might be having one of a similar event at the same time. And just more to come on all of that, and finally, you know, just, this is the season of cheer, of course, but you know, the holidays can be pretty stressful for some people, and there are some, there is one study out there that indicates, and this is from the let me find their name again, National Alliance on Mental Health, where they say, from their study, sixty four percent of people with mental illness report holidays make their conditions worse, and so it can be a hard time on folks. So if you do have, if, if, if you're one of those people, or you have someone in your family, or, or friends who, who are suffering, you know, please let them know that there is help available, and the Calvert Health Department, their Calvert Crisis Response Unit, also services mental mental health issues. It's not just for opioids or overdoses or drug use issues. But if you are having mental health issues, this is a twenty four hour hotline that you can call. They're also on the website, but their number is eight seven seven four six seven five six two eight. And so, you know, please, if, if you do know somebody that could benefit from, from that, let them know. And check it out on their, on their website. So, anyway, thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you Keith. Walkability Community Advisor Group, co-chair Peggy, do you have anything to share?
Well, I guess that's one thing, is I'm not the co-chair. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're just talking about some of the things to put together with respect to some of the planned walking paths, not all of which are, you know, off the road, some of them are on the road, but thinking about making it, having them be named, similar to the Heritage Trail that goes, you know, along the boardwalk. But we were discussing that at the last meeting, along with a few more actions to take to figure out what to do with the pocket park, and hoping to have another go at getting a sidewalk put in between North Beach, between Seagate and Horizons.
Very good. Thank you Peggy. New business, council to consider the reappointment of Cindy Greengold to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is your motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions from the council? I'll begin with Valerie if there is.
Not so much a question, just a statement that Cindy's been a solid, well-informed contributor throughout her time on planning and zoning, and I feel like we are lucky to have her.
Yeah, yes we are. Yeah, we, yes, we are. Uh, Larry?
Uh, just to echo that sentiment that she's been a very strong voice on this whole effort. I don't agree with everything that she has. Advocated for, but again, I doubt that she agrees with everything that I've advocated for. So. I just, given where we are in the critical nature of moving the comp plan forward, I just don't think this is the time to have a vacancy on planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Greg?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, I just had a general question though. Um, the appointments, do they, are they, are they termed and is that why she's up for reappointment?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I agree with everything that Valerie said and, and what, what, what my colleague, Councilman Jaworski said too. Um, you know, we all don't, aren't going to agree on everything, but, uh, she's been a very strong, hard worker there for a while now. And, uh, and I think the, uh, I, I, I hearken back to the, I remember vividly the, the interviews with her, uh, initially. Um, and, and I respect, um, the fact that, that Cindy Green Gold's going to continue on, uh, planning and zoning. It's a good thing. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, no, I would just like to say definitely support her continuing her tenure on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. And Peggy?
Um, I have no comments about Cindy, but I do have a question. How long is the appointment?
It's five-year terms.
Five years? Thank you.
All right. Okay, we, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Uh, next is to consider the appointment of, of, of Richard Birch. Who, who we just, just met again to, uh, zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Any comment? Yeah, we've heard enough, but we've heard a lot from him. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, town councils who consider awarding a purchase. To IMAX in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred, thirty-five hours and sixty-five cents for the purchase. Of a power monitor at the water reclamation treatment plant. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Uh, I'll begin with, I think it's Peggy's turn. Uh, Peggy?
Uh, no, I have none on that one.
Okay, Keith?
No, thank you, Mayor.
And Greg?
No questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Larry?
No questions other than just an additional comment that I'm a little bit surprised that this wasn't included in the, in our upgrade. But it is essential to the operation of the plant.
Mm-hmm. And Valerie?
Uh, just a financing question. This is a shared expense coming out of the, uh, that fund, right? And I know.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Just confirming. Okay. No other questions. Thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Uh, town council to consider awarding a contract to. Hack Incorporated for the installation of a flow meter to monitor town flow under a. Sixty-month lease agreement with twenty-four month renewal periods for a total cost of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. These can be terminated if meter performance is not what is expected by the town. The F Y twenty-two cost is. Five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and would come from the town utility fund and will, will, will not be built to the partners. I- is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have some questions on the contract.
I'll begin with Valerie.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I ha- I have some questions on this. Um, just basically what I was, I'm looking for understanding. And so I know we have this SCADA system. And when we talk about. Uh, measuring flow. I know that we've been interested in ensuring that we understand how many gallons are coming from where. Whether it be in Anarundel or Calvert County. And so I guess the gist of my, my question is. And don't get me wrong, I'm totally supportive of this, the way I understand it. But how does it differ from this SCADA system? That is what I don't understand.
So this data system is a monitoring system. So this is capturing the flow. Uh, this is actually the device that's going to measure the flow. So it's going to go into the line and actually measure it.
Well, if the. If the SCADA system is. Measuring, how, how does it measure if it? Doesn't do the same thing, sort of. Do you know what I mean?
So the SCADA system, and John could elaborate on this further, uh, but it is an alert device. So it's, it's going to connect to all of your different utilities that you connect it to at the plant or public works. And it's going to alert you of issues, but it's not actually in a line measuring flow. So it's a separate, separate, uh, tool or piece of equipment.
I think you did a really good job explaining that. So let's expand on this just for a second. Just, it's for my understanding. And so this system is going to allow us to actually look at the flow in the lines itself. And so this is for the town and it's coming out of its town utility fund. And so where the placement of whatever this is inside the lines. Will we be able to tell the flow at the point that it comes in from either nor, all points? That it comes in from North Beach, Southern Anarundel and Calvert. In other words, outside the municipality. You know, I know we're not going to put anything in those areas. But, um, at the point of, of where the boundaries meet. Will this system cover that?
So the purpose of this flow measuring device is to measure town of Chesapeake Beach flow only. It is not to measure partner flow. So this, this is for the town and that's why it's going to be built out of the town's utility fund. Versus against the partner billing.
Then.
So it is just one flow measuring device. There's multiple flow measuring device, and this is solely for the town of Chesapeake Beach.
What's the name of the flow measuring device? Is to measure the flow that comes in to the other jurisdictions?
The name, the brand, there's, there's, there's multiple, uh, are, are you referring to the brand or?
Well, it's just, it's the same sort of idea though, is that we.
Yes.
So, so we would measure in the flow that comes into the base water plan from the other jurisdictions. And this is. An enhancement to understand where the flow is generating within the municipality of Chesapeake Beach. Is that right?
This is a flow measuring device solely for the town of Chesapeake Beach. There are other measuring devices that service Anarundel County, Calvert County and North Beach. So, so yes, it is in addition to the flow measuring system, but it is solely to per Chesapeake Beach's flow.
Which has not been looked before without this, correct?
We have flow measuring devices within Chesapeake Beach, but this is going to capture a remaining piece that hasn't been captured in the past. So this is in addition to cover and provide more clarity to flow coming into the plant.
Is it, is it directed at a specific area within town? Or is it?
It's the total town flow.
Well, it's, can I speak to this?
I'm just trying to understand.
Do, what we're trying to do is we have four main pump stations in, in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Those four main pump stations are all metered. Um, what we're trying to do is this flow meter is going to measure the rest of the flow. That's not coming from pump stations. It's all gravity flow. And that's the part that we're missing to get the total flow of the town's part. Of the flow allocations into the wastewater treatment plant.
Great explanation. That is perfect. So, so we have our four, we have more than that though. So this is. To gauge the flow on the gravity lines, not through the four pump stations. And that, that, that makes total sense to me. I mean, it does. You know, you hit it. That makes sense. If I understand and I reiterated it back properly. Okay, I have no more questions. I think I got it.
Thank you. Uh, Larry?
Let me just build on that a little bit. Uh, right now we have a sort of an unusual arrangement. Where we've got the flows coming into the water reclamation treatment plant. We measure the flows coming from our user. Communities, North Beach, Calvert County and South Anarundel County. But we basically to get the total flow from the town of Chesapeake Beach alone. We take the flow, total flow going into the plant and subtract everybody else out of it, and the balance is assumed to be coming from the town. This will allow us to more accurately measure the, uh, flow that's coming just from the town of Chesapeake Beach. And it's important to accurately measure the flows to ensure operational charges are equitably allocated among the users. John, anything to add to that?
Oh, I think you got it. Hit it right on the nail.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg?
Uh, yeah, thanks, uh, for those clarifications. This is pretty much answers my questions. I want to paraphrase a little bit here. We have other existing measuring devices. Uh, all of our various measuring devices are working in concert. To accurately assess total flow. Um, I think, uh. So this addition will. Help us accurately differentiate flows from the partners. Is that kind of what I'm getting? We, because we definitely need a more accurate picture. Of the total town flow as a kind of a check to make sure that, uh, everybody that, uh, that, that, the, the split is, is equitable.
Yes.
That's correct. Yeah, okay. Um, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, and Keith?
No, that was great. No additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Peggy?
I do have some questions. Um, so I, a question about the ability to terminate the contract. Is that the ninety-five percent availability for three months? I mean, if it goes below on three consecutive months, ninety-five percent, that would be considered the cause to terminate? Because of unsatisfactory performance? Yes, yes. If the town is unsatisfied with the flow measuring, uh, of, of the device, we can terminate the contract. And with the data tracking, can we keep, uh, is there a historical tracking we can do to say, okay, in twenty twenty-two it was this much? And in twenty twenty-three it's gone up or down and all that kind of stuff? Yes, yes. So if we terminate the contract, do we get to keep that data somewhere? Cause we won't have access to their systems. But so are we downloading it somewhere so we could read it elsewhere? Or if we terminate the contract, then that's it. That history's gone. Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. John does a lot of analysis on data and I know he exports all of it. So, so John, do you want to speak to that in your process?
Yes, I'm, I'm constantly monitoring, um, these flow and the flow readings. I do download a lot of it. I print it out. So I keep a, a regularly, um, folder on. You know, monthly, daily, yearly, uh, records of everything that we do.
Okay, good.
We can go back and reference different things and storms and floods and compare different flows for different situations.
All right, great. Now, cause I was noticing that if you do terminate the contract, you can't get back into their systems. So we would have to have our own data. Excellent. Um, and then I have a question on page six of seven. They're talking about customer equipment that we have to have. They don't really specify. It's kind of a generic, you know, server or whatever. It's the last paragraph on page six.
Well, I, I think what they're saying, there is some requirements for perhaps for, um, hooking. Type of flow meter up and it's in a manhole. Uh, the work that, that was required, uh, was actually get it power. And we wanted to get the data recorder, um, that does all the, the actual recording of the flows. Out of the manhole. So we put all the electric and everything outside of the manhole. Into a electrical panel box, um, the street level. And we, we have to supply it power also. So those requirements have already been met and we're ready to. To start recording.
Okay, great. Cause that, that was my question. Did we have that equipment already? So we do. Wonderful. Yes, I was going to say, Mayor, Jay wanted to just add, uh.
Go ahead, Jay.
Ju- just first perspective of the county and everyone else in the public. So. Some specific things. Where, where we're at now, this last monitor, flow meter, if you will, device is in a gravity sewer with some. Unique situations, one of the hardest ones to implement. But I did want to say that. Richfield Station, you know, our biggest neighborhood, obviously in town, we have a pump station there that. Measures the flow very accurately. There's a full pipe, pump comes on, pump comes off, records it. That information is held in the SCADA system. In other words, it's one of the inputs that that data is held indefinitely. So Richfield Station, we know a hundred percent the flow. Bayview Hills, we know one hundred percent the flow. Chesapeake Village. We know one hundred percent the flow. Mears Avenue, we know one hundred percent the flow. And keep in mind, Mears Avenue takes everything south of Fish and Creek, straight to the plant. So our biggest businesses, the Rod and Reel. Uh, Abner's, we know the flow. This last piece is on the north end of town where there is no pump station, if you will. And it gravities to the plant. I don't have an opportunity as the operator of the field collections to, to monitor it. So that's, I just want to give perspective. We're talking about the last twenty percent. Everything else in town is monitored, which, which costs the town money. We have flow meters, they take PMs, we have to keep up with them. So I just want to give a perspective to the council and the public of this last piece of the puzzle, if you will. That was it.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure. Thank you.
We, we, we have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. Um, is, is there any additional public comment at this time? If not, I'll go to Peggy and the, uh, lightning round.
All right. Um, well, hoping everybody has good holiday and I really want to know if anyone would be available to meet for drinks. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week?
Every day?
All three days.
Starting at eight AM.
Send us an email or call us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, that was, I, I don't think anybody can even top that, that, uh, lightning round. Maybe we should just adjourn. But, but I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and follow protocol. Uh, thank you, Peggy. Um, uh, Keith? You're, that was a go of.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, first I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. You know, twenty twenty-one. Has been a tough year, I think, for a lot of people. And, um. I just, uh, want you all to be safe and in honor of Beach Elementary, you know, be kinder than necessary. Um, you know, going into the holidays and into the next year, I think that's a good, a good message. So thank you for bringing that, Mayor. And y'all have a great evening and a great holiday season.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Greg?
Yeah, I, um, appreciate the lightness of these December meetings. The way the town celebrates the holiday season is something that all of us will forever carry forward and will be, uh. A gladness in our heart, if you will. Um. We're, like I mentioned before, we're under the gun to get the comprehensive plan complete. Um. I'm not sure if canceling our December work session is going to help or hinder our role, and I'm not being necessarily critical. I just feel that pressure of getting that complete and it's real. Um, I, uh, I fully expect. This more, I, I, I fully expect, uh, the, once this moratorium does expire. Um, I expect the applicant to be looking at resubmitting, um, their packages, uh, or expecting advancement of their various proposals. Um, come moratorium expiration, um, you know, are we going to be ready? Um, everybody have a happy twenty twenty-two.
Merry Christmas to you as well, sir. Uh, Larry?
Uh, two things. Uh, one, uh, on a somewhat somber note, I just wanted to note, uh, for the record. The passing of former Maryland State Senator Bernie Fowler. Uh, Bernie passed away on December twelfth. Uh, he was renowned for his effort to protect the Chesapeake Bay as a retired environmental engineer who did a lot of work in this area. I got to know him. Uh, Bernie was famous for his annual weight in where he, uh, walked into the water to measure. How far, uh, he could get out in the depths of the water and still see his feet. And that was sort of his, uh, measurement, if you will, for the clarity and hence the, uh. And that was sort of his, uh, measurement, if you will, for the clarity and hence the, um. Cleanliness of the bay. So, um, thanks Bernie for all that you did. Uh, I just wanted to say that whatever holiday, holiday you may celebrate, whether it's Christmas, Kwanzaa, or for those old folks of us that remember Festivus. Best wishes for a happy holiday and best wishes for a happy new and hopefully COVID-adjusted new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Merry Christmas. Uh, and Valerie?
Oh yes, just one question, um, that I forgot to ask is, do we know when the calendars will be ready?
They should be ready, uh, very soon. They were delayed due to the paper that being backordered, but, um, we're hoping to have them hopefully within the next week.
Within the next week. That's wonderful news. And I'd like to, uh, thank everyone that participated in the brightest beacon on the bay. Once again, I'd like to reiterate just how much, uh, we'll miss Marilyn and Jimmy being part of the town staff and what a great job they did. Um, I have to say that I'm in concurrence with Greg's concerns regarding the comprehensive plan. I just don't want to see any of the momentum that has been gained, lost. I think they're moving along in a good way. I'd like to, uh, wish everyone a very, very, very Merry Christmas. And, uh, finally, I'd like to say, uh, Peggy, feel free to text me, um, regarding your offer. And with that, I will leave it to Patrick. Merry Christmas, Mr. Mear.
Indeed. Is, is there a Murray motion to adjourn?
Murray motion made.
Is there a Murray second?
My ugly sweater seconds it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Happy New Year.
Christmas, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.